Boy, do I love that tune. That's "Our Pepper." You can get all the music on our website at jazzandblues.org. Jazz is Six, a member supporter, KJazz 657. You're hanging out with Bubba Jackson, BWB, coming up in just a second. Hopefully, I found some music to make you feel good all under. If not, hey, give me another chance, you know? Give me E. F. F., because I really, really tried. I'll do it again tomorrow at six, so I'll see you then. Until then, hey, just hang in there. I have much more on Jazz is Six, a member supporter, KJazz. Eighty-eight four one, enjoy.
Good evening, folks. I call the joint meeting of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency for January twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, to order. Tonight, we have a special privilege. We have Troop Six Forty-Two to join us in the pledge of our allegiance to the flag, and we have Eric Perez, who's going to lead us.
All those in uniforms, please, all those, please, right hand over your heart, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose stance, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good job on that one, and we're happy to see all our scouts here this evening. You have much to learn from us. If we really care, we will get through this in a hurry. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Levitt.
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller.
Here.
Councilman Shanks.
Here.
Councilman Slone.
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Councilwoman Deaton is an excused absence for tonight. She's on vacation.
I'd like to move that her absence be approved by the council.
Second. All those in favor, please vote. And all except for Councilwoman Deaton, that passes.
Mayor, I have two announcements to make. I want to call everyone's attention that this is a joint meeting of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Under a recently passed state law, we're required to identify that you get thirty dollars per meeting for attending the Redevelopment Agency meeting. It's probably going to be your last payment, because as of February first, we will no longer have an agency. In addition to that, there's an item on the agenda. It's Public Hearing Item J. At the request of the applicant, the applicant has requested that that be continued until March twelfth. So if there's anyone here, and it's involving a variance at four hundred Ocean Avenue, if you live within five hundred feet, you'll get notice of that hearing on March twelfth. But for now, it's going to be rescheduled to March twelfth, and you'll get notice. If anyone's here to talk about that item, we prefer that you came back during the public hearing. But if you want to talk about it now, you can make your comments during oral communications.
All right, thank you.
I'll give you two announcements.
Approval of agenda, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearranges the order of the agenda. Are there any changes other than the item you just mentioned? Ms. City Manager?
The City Attorney will identify those items for you. Thank you.
All right.
Item, let's see if I can get the... Yes, thank you. First of all, on the consent calendar, Item F, there's a schedule attached as Exhibit B. It's in front of the council, and it's available for the public, which has been amended. So that's the one that the council will be, well, actually, the Redevelopment Agency will be taking action on. There's a public hearing, Item H, which is the bus bench franchise. There's been some additional changes to the draft franchise agreement, and during the public hearing, staff will point out those changes. Those are the only two that we need to mention at this time.
All right, thank you. Any members of the council wish to make any change?
I'd like to pull Item F. F doesn't frank.
Item F.
I didn't hear it, F doesn't frank. F is frank.
Okay. Need a motion to approve as amended?
We approve as amended. Second?
All right, that passes, four oh. Item F has been pulled from the consent calendar, and the consent calendar has been approved as amended. We have presentations and recognitions this evening. Presentation will be by the Orange County Water District. Step forward.
Mayor Levitt, councilmembers, my name is Philip Anthony. I have the pleasure of representing your city and some of the surrounding cities on the board of the Orange County Water District. I'm elected to that position by your constituents and some of your neighbors, and it's a very great pleasure to be here again. Our district is responsible for managing the groundwater basin, which is under the northern part of the county, including Seal Beach, and that's extremely important to you and your neighbors, because we normally let you pump around sixty, eighty percent on that range of your water supply from the ground. Now, unfortunately, the rest of your water supply, you have to buy from Metropolitan Water District, that's the imported water, and it's much less dependable, and it's much more expensive. So our concern is to try to keep the water in the ground as available as possible, so you can pump as much of your needs as you can from that supply. Unfortunately, we can't let you pump a hundred percent, or else you and the neighbors will pump the basin dry, and we'd all be in trouble. But it's a great value to all of us to have that groundwater here as our major water supply in this part of the county. This picture, the dark area there, is the northern part of the county, which is the boundary of both the water basin and our district. And of course, down in the lower-left corner there is the city of Seal Beach, and you're within the groundwater area, and you do pump most of your water supply from the ground. We were formed way back in thirty-three to manage this basin for the good of the people here in Orange County. We're governed by ten-member Board of Directors, elected like myself, except three are appointed by the three cities of Anaheim, Fullerton, and Santa Ana. And we provide, right now, about sixty-five percent of your water supply. It's been as high as eighty percent in the past, depending on the weather and the demand on the basin. We do operate a number of facilities to get the water from where it comes from in different ways into the ground. Water comes down the river, the Santa Ana River, from the mountains through Prado Dam and down to Orange County, and we have percolation basins in the river and nearby at Anaheim, where we actually trap the river water and put it in the ground by percolation. We also have things like the groundwater replenishment system we're talking about tonight, where we actually recycle water to provide a new source of water that's then put in the basin. Now, the water comes from a number of places to get enough water into the basin for you folks to pump it out every year, and this is a quick picture of where that water comes from. The biggest supply has always been the base flow of the Santa Ana River, which, even though it's come down a bit in recent years, is still is about a hundred thousand acre-feet a year. We also get some from storm flows on top of the base flow, and local rainfall provides another good chunk, the white up there. We buy a little bit of water from Metropolitan when it's available, but that's very expensive water for us, too. But the new recycled water, GIBRIS Ground Reinforcement System, now provides a very substantial portion of our supply to put into the ground, so you can pump it out. We need the GIBRIS Ground Reinforcement System, because we're plagued by drought. This is basically a desert we live in. We get a little rain like today and yesterday, but most of the time, it's on the border of being a drought, a desert type area. The imported water is expensive, but it's also becoming less and less dependable. We've had losses from the Colorado River. Our share has gone down, and other states have taken more of their share. The state water project, the Delta up north, you know, is always plagued by environmental issues, lawsuits, and droughts up there and demand on the water. The local supplies are variable, but the local supplies are very dependable, because we can more or less control them. Now, GIBRIS has actually celebrated its fourth anniversary just earlier this month. It's been working now for four years, providing a new source of water for us. Up to seventy million gallons a day are produced in this plant by taking sewer water from the sanitation district next door to us in Fountain Valley and making it so pure, it's almost distilled water quality. And that's a new source of water that we use to put into a seawater intrusion barrier, which keeps the seawater out of some gaps like next to you in the San River and over in Fountain Valley. So this new source of water is actually enough water to meet the demands of about six hundred thousand people, almost six hundred thousand people, so it's a very serious new source of water. It works by taking a hundred percent of the water from the San District, it's already been treated good enough to put in the ocean, and we purify it by microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV light with peroxide. The end result is virtually distilled water, it's extremely pure water. We've also proven that it's safe, because the Health Department, the state and the county, require us to test this water much more than any normal one to be tested. We, for four years, have been testing for over four hundred different chemical compounds, just to be extra sure that the water is safe. It's always passed all the tests. In fact, most of the contaminants are non-detect in the testing. The benefits are, it's a brand-new water supply. It reuses what would be otherwise a wasted source of water. It increases our reliability, offsets imported cutbacks, costs less than imported water. It costs actually less than it costs to bring water from the Colorado River or Northern California. It saves half, pardon me, it saves half the energy it takes to bring water from Northern California. And it improves the quality of basin, because it's purer than our other sources of water. What's next is, we're now expanding, or planning to start expanding, this plant to make even more local recycled water for us. We want to expand it up from seventy to a hundred million gallons a day. We've already got a bidder ready to build it. The contract's been approved, and it will produce another thirty-one thousand acre-feet a year on top of the existing seventy-two, and that'll be enough for another two hundred fifty thousand people, or about eight hundred thousand people total from this recycled water. So it's a tremendous new asset for all of us here in Northern Orange County. Now, it actually makes your water costs for Seal Beach cheaper. Let's look ahead to about FY fifteen, sixteen, that's when the plan will be, the expansion will be completed and online. If you look on the left, pardon me, if you look on the left side over here, without the project, you have thirty-five percent imported water, sixty-five percent local water, but the imported water will cost almost a thousand dollars an acre-foot, while the local groundwater, without the project, is only two ninety-two, and with the project, it's only three twenty-eight, still much, much less than the nine eighty for imported water. Which means that with the, without the project, you'd be paying five seventy-two combined for your water per acre-foot. With the project, your cost goes down to a combined five fifty-four per acre-foot. That's the savings for Seal Beach and your people, about sixty-six thousand dollars a year. Because obviously, the more you can pump, the less you have to buy imported, your net effect is your cost goes down. Besides, it becomes, it's more reliable and dependable, too, but the money is going the right way. So we ask you for your support for that expansion. That's on your agenda tonight. And the other thing I want to talk about is, I mentioned stormwater is a source of water for us, is a very good source, because the stormwater is basically free. Prado Dam is up here in Riverside County, you can buy it up there. This is upriver, up toward the mountains. We're allowed now, by agreement with the Corps of Engineers, to save water during the stormy season up to elevation of four ninety feet above sea level. During the non-stormy season, we can go up to five oh five. That's almost ten thousand water saved per acre-feet each storm here, up to twenty thousand up this level. Of course, it doesn't rain much during the non-flood season. But we, right now, work with the Corps of Engineer to increase the storage level up there to five oh five all year round. That'll let us capture a lot more water during the stormy season. Now, this is done very safely, because it's based on weather predictions. You don't store water back there. If there's a big storm coming, you do it between storms. But that water can then be released through the dam, down the river to Orange County, where it can be put into our recharge basins at a lower flow level. So this is a huge benefit to us. It's enough water for thirty thousand acre-feet or even more, if you go get several good storms, and it also cuts down on the outside source of water we need, because this water coming down the river to us is basically almost free for us. So we ask for your support for these two things, the expansion of recycling system and this work with the Corps of Engineers to increase the stormwater capture behind the dam, because both these things provide more dependable water for you at a lower cost. Good news, if we can do it, we're making good progress, and we'd appreciate your support. Any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. We have with us our general manager, Mike Marcus, who can answer the questions I can't.
When will the new project be online?
About three years from now. We just approved the contract to start construction right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that you showed two hundred and fifty thousand people would be benefiting from the increase. Just so everybody realizes what that means, that's ten cities of Seal Beach. We're on twenty-five thousand.
But see, we're serving actually a total of two-point-four million people in North Orange County. Now, you're a high-quality part of that, but there's a lot of neighbors in this water, too. But as you say, it's a huge impact on the amount of water available for you to use. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Always good to be here.
And you do have our support.
I know we do. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you.
If you ever have a chance, please come down and take a tour of the facility.
Our city manager would like to do that. We were just discussing it.
Well, I know you've been there, Mayor Levitt.
Yes, I have.
And but if the city manager, if you'd like to come, or any of your...
To celebrate her forty-sixth birthday, which is coming up tomorrow. We would like to be able to toast her with one of those glasses of almost pure water.
She's much too young to be... Anyway, please come for a tour if you can, but thank you again. It's a pleasure to be with you.
All right, thank you. Good night. And now, oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to staff and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state the name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk. All right. Esther?
Good evening. Sorry. Honorable Council Mayor, council members and staff, Esther Tenyon, Seal Beach Chamber, we wish to comment on the following. Item Agenda H, Public Hearing for Bus Bench Franchise Ordinance Number One Six One Four. As the chamber is ever vigilant in seeking new ways to beautify Seal Beach, we are particularly interested that one of the aspects of the ordinance will be to provide aesthetic uniformity of benches throughout the city, and that maintenance standards for bus benches throughout the city will ensure that these standards are maintained. Additional revenue for the city is, of course, a plus. I was privileged to meet recently with Michael Culver of Coastline Advertising Corp., following up on a statement in the Agenda Staff Report of December twelfth concerning the bus bench franchise. Quote, "Coastline's first priority will be given to local businesses for bus bench advertising sales. We will, as we have in the past, contact local businesses and describe the benefits of local outdoor advertising and suggest locations for marketing opportunities." In our discussion, it was agreed that if Coastline Advertising Corp. is awarded the franchise, Coastline and the Chamber will jointly develop a marketing opportunity plan to benefit our members. I'm not privy to the changes that may be to this ordinance, but as we know it, the Chamber endorses the adoption of Ordinance Number One Six One Four, granting a citywide bus bench franchise agreement to Coastline Advertising Corporation. In regard to our members and chamber events, I'm happy to report we had sixty-two new members last year. So as you can see, we're growing. We're so pleased to be working with the city council and the staff. It's just going to be a banner year, I think, for everyone. In regard to chamber events, we are pleased that the Health and Fitness Expo, for the first time in its five-year history, will be held in Eisenhower Park on Saturday, March twenty-fourth. Since the folks at Leisure World are interested attendees, we are investigating the possibility of a shuttle service from that area. New this year will be a Kids' Health and Exercise Fun Zone, a Green Zone, and a Speaker's Zone. We wish to express our appreciation to Tim Kelsey of Community Services for his ongoing support and cooperation in this endeavor. The twenty-fourth Silver Anniversary Classic Car Show is off to a great start, having secured two title sponsors, Big Daddy's Car Wash and Original Parts Group, at each five thousand dollar platinum sponsor. The show is already sold out, confirming five hundred classic cars will be on view. And upcoming on January twenty-sixth is ribbon cutting for Take Shape for Life, to which you are all invited. Thank you for this opportunity to speak for the council. Should you need more information, or if we can be of service, please contact the chamber office. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Really? Last chance. City Attorney?
I'll report tonight.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Council comments?
Nothing to add, and I'm glad you said the part about the birthday.
Carrie?
Yeah, I'd like to request that we have an agenda item on the February thirteenth council meeting to discuss, and I realize that's the next council meeting, so it's a little faster than normal, City Manager. Anyway, to discuss how to proceed with regards to the residential site inventory in the two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen draft housing element. In light of a number of things that have happened, that have transpired since our October tenth joint session with the Planning Commission, I'd like to see the council consider forming either a new group with a balance of power between the districts, or have the council take over this inventory list, or have the ad hoc, excuse me, the ad hoc general plan and local coastal citizens advisory committee hear the public and revisit the, and by the way, I meant for all the previous ones, to also have the public, have public input again, and have the head-up committee to hear the public and revisit the properties to be listed in the inventory, with only the ten district appointees voting, so we have a balance of power with regard to what properties are put on the inventory. One of the issues that came up after the meeting was that the public really wasn't advised of the meeting, at least in my opinion sufficiently. They were, it was, in the report, it was indicated that it was in the newspaper, and it wasn't in the newspaper, and it all said, it said in the report, it was on our website, it wasn't on our website, and our website is very difficult to use with regard to notices. And then it was indicated later in the next draft that went to the state that the, that the posting was made on the board outside, but I don't consider that as really giving it a lot of notice, which we took credit for in our report, that we provide a lot of notice. Another issue that came up was that the owner, it was indicated the owner supported the housing element, and I was told, as well as the one-eighty news, by representatives of the previous owner, that they had no intention of having housing built on the property at shops at Rossmore. And Henry Tobata of the Rossmore Service District, the manager there, indicated he had talked to the owner, and she said there was no way she'd have affordable housing on the property without the city taking it with eminent domain. So the new owners also addressed that back at the most recent ad hoc committee meeting in Rossmore, and the new owners said that they had no intention of building housing. So I think that the Rossmore site is one that should be reconsidered, along with all the other options, and I think it's important, because this particular issue is driven by district, and I think that we need to have a balance of power voting on what goes into that inventory. So therefore, again, to have it as a discussion item on the next agenda, because we can't make a decision tonight, I would ask that we have that on the next agenda for discussion by the council.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
No other council items, and on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and are enacted by a... Items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of the items previously removed, and that was Item F. Do I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
And that carries 4O. Okay, items removed from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I removed Item F. I don't know, the city manager's advised in advance that I wanted to ask about the cornerstone project and the inconsistency. Can you explain that, the 50,000 versus the 150,000, as previously shown on the schedule?
Our Director of Development Services can address that for you.
Thank you.
Yes, the Item F before the council is the enforceable obligation payment schedule, which talks about payments that the redevelopment agency and then the successor agency will make over the next six months between now and June 30th. When we last brought this item to the council, redevelopment was something that was still in existence with the recent Supreme Court decision, California Supreme Court decision ending redevelopment. Redevelopment goes away on February 1st. We're not sure what's going to happen to the housing part of the work that the city does or the redevelopment agency does. Previously, we did have $150,000 in there. That's when we assumed that redevelopment would remain in existence and Civic Stone would continue to do their work throughout the year. Now that redevelopment is ending, we have ended Civic Stone's contract. The current projects that they're working on should be done by the end of April, and that's why, instead of showing 12,500 through the rest of the year, we've just ended their contract, or will be ending their contract in April. So that's the difference for the discrepancy.
I see.
Gary?
The other one was the Exeter Field, and that was the payment schedule indicates 29,400, fiscal year 11, 12, and the numbers really look more like 23,000. Can you explain that difference?
Sure. The difference is, this is, let me find out which line that is. That's line 17 on EOPS. This schedule actually includes the first year, first month, excuse me, of the following fiscal year, fiscal year 12, 13. So if you took off that $5,900 payment that's due in July of this year but next fiscal year, the amount drops by $5,900, so it's more in line with the CAFER. The CAFER amount was $23,088. We rounded up to basically $24,000. So if you took out, again, if you take out the last month, the year-to-date amount in here matches the year-to-date amount in the CAFER.
Okay. Thank you. I'm moving to approve this agenda item.
No second? Please vote. No second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, that passes. 4O. And now the public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. This is a time and place for a public hearing for the consideration of the bus bench franchise. Recommendation is to waive further reading, adopt the Ordinance Number 1614, approving the citywide franchise agreement with Coastline Advertising Corporation. You have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, Assistant City Manager Sean Crumbie will address this item, and I know there were some follow-up questions from council. He'd be more than happy to address those as well.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Item H on the agenda is a recommendation from staff to conduct a public hearing and conduct a second reading of Ordinance 1614 for adoption. This item is related to bus benches throughout the city. We're going to just make a quick presentation and talk about some of the routes in town, bench locations, the different types, and summarize why we'd like to bring this item forward. Currently, we have multiple, this map shows the Orange County Transportation Authority's bus system throughout Seal Beach. We currently have, I believe, four routes that come into Seal Beach, and we have benches and bus shelters that are located at the bus stops along these routes. Currently, we have a franchise agreement with Clear Channel Outdoors to provide bus shelters at some of the locations within the city. Now, Clear Channel Outdoors provides shelters at the bus stops where it's financially feasible for them to provide a shelter and do maintenance on those locations. On the other locations, it's really been unregulated in the past year in relation to benches. Companies have come in and added benches, and the city has never regulated, permitted, or even really paid attention to those benches. And there are a lot of issues with those benches in relation to the maintenance of those benches, the aesthetics, the look. We need to make sure that they have proper ADA clearance, American With Disabilities Act, it needs to comply with that. And so the purpose of this agreement is to meet all of those items and at the same time, provide a little bit of revenue for the city. Additionally, we've had no input on the advertising that's been on those benches, so it will be nice to have a little bit of input to make sure that things that the city does not want to see on there, namely tobacco and some other materials that we don't show it on those bus benches. There were a series of questions that were asked at the first reading of this ordinance on December 12th, and I believe those items have been addressed in the staff report. There are two corrections to the franchise agreement that's on the dais. Let me go through both of those. The first one relates to trash receptacles. That has been added to the contract. The contractor, Coastline Advertising, has agreed to place a trash can and maintain it for $10 a week or $40 a month if the city requests it. So if we have a request to place a trash can anywhere where we have a bench, we can add that to the contract. The cost of that maintenance and emptying of that trash can will come out of the fees that the city was to receive for this franchise. The second item is in Section 11.0, and it deals with Exhibit A. Exhibit A was meant to be a guide, not a hard list, as far as locations of bus benches. Typically, within franchise agreements at the city, we have not dictated locations for different facilities. Prime example is Southern California Edison. We do not, we franchise them the right to be here, but we do not tell them where power lines can be placed. We provide guidelines, but that's it. With this agreement, we are bringing in a vendor that will run bus benches for the city. If there are requests not to have benches in certain locations, we'd be happy to remove the benches from that. If there is a desire to have a bench that does not have advertising on it, the city has the Memorial Bench Program, or we do have city funds that we can try to identify other alternatives to have benches placed in those. This slide shows all the locations for, it's a general layout of locations for bus benches throughout the city. You'll notice that everything on Electric Avenue has an asterisk there. The reason for that is because we've had a group of residents request to Orange County Transportation Authority relocation of Bus Line 42 off of Electric Avenue and onto PCH. The city has been monitoring that, but that is something that's come from the community to Orange County Transportation Authority. This exhibit shows three different types of benches. Some of the different options include the type of seating that you sit on, the armrest locations, whether we have them or not, and maybe Michael Culver, our vendor from Coastline, can provide a little more detail as to some of the options that we have. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and it'd be appropriate to have a public hearing.
Mayor, there were two additional changes to the agreement. Yeah, the two that Sean emphasized, 1.3. We wanted to make it clear that nothing in this agreement in this franchise shall prohibit the city from installing its own benches throughout the city, park areas, other areas. Provide the benches do not contain advertising. The second change is on page four, in Section 3.21, and we put in a number, but I think we put the yearly number in, so the number on 3.2.1 should be $900 a quarter. So that, instead of 3,600, that number should be 900. That's the guaranteed minimum payment that the city will receive every quarter. And that's the only changes. You have one more correction in RID? Page nine? Page nine?
That's the other one that I went over.
Yeah, that's, Sean had already mentioned that, the trash receptacles. All right. I had a question. You said we reserve the right for the city to install any of its own benches. Does it mean that the city would be in the business of buying or constructing benches and putting them up there? It's possible that, like in parks, yes. Sometimes we get grants and other times the city just pays for them.
Another possibility is there's been a concern in relation to advertising in residential neighborhoods, and so if there's a request not to place a bench there, then the city has the right to place its own bench.
Yeah. Council comments? Go ahead, Gary.
Well, actually, that was one that I was asked about because on Lampton Avenue, if ultimately we decide we need to have a bench for whatever reason at a bus stop, I don't want to have to have a bench with advertising, so I just asked to have it made clear that we could put our own bench in. I did ask about the 631, about the fact that the guarantee has the ability to put one or two buses, two, one or two benches in at their choice, so they could go to a site where we may not want more than one bench, and we don't have any control over that. I thought we were going to try to modify that.
Yeah, that was discussed, and it's, I'm sure the applicant, if he's out there? Okay. Probably would agree with us if the full council wants it. That was on Section, what page was that again?
It's on page seven, 6.3.1. It's just that my concern is the city had no say.
Yes, 6.3.1, and this was not discussed with staff at all, and so they should give an opinion as to that. It says, "Guarantee will have the option to install one to three bus benches." The suggestion was to say, "Subject to city approval." All right, "identified by the city." So that shouldn't be a problem, and just clarifying that, and we'll see if the applicant has any issue with that.
But that isn't saying the city has the ability to identify one or two benches. Is it the way written, it's written, city attorney?
Yes, I think it's, to make it crystal clear, we'll just say, "Subject to the, subject to city approval" as well, and that way, it's not ambiguous at all.
Okay. I had a couple more other comments. When I looked at this and said 18 benches, that meant monthly we're going to get $16.67 per bench, and if you have the trash picked up twice during the month, that means you're going to owe Coastline $3.33, to be exact. On the other side, I didn't quite understand, on Section 9 of the agreement, it calls for the Coastline to, for the area to be clean and litter-free at all times. And it's hard to be litter-free if you don't have a trash can there, so I'm wondering if trash cans shouldn't come with the bench, and also that way the site would always be litter-free at all times. So I just wonder if the trash can shouldn't come with that, based on Section 9.4. Well, let me go on with my other comments, and I--
All right. Were you asking for an answer?
Well, what I'm saying is, first of all, I'm saying that I think maybe the trash can should come with it, but there must be some economics involved in that. So it's just a point that if we're going to have these benches, we're going to be losing money if we're keeping them clean. We're going to be paying money instead of making money. And in general, I personally don't think, I think the contract's more binding on the city than we should want. And in my opinion, if we have this agreement, I would like to see it limited to Seal Beach Boulevard and Pacific Coast Highway. I mean, Seal Beach Boulevard, I don't know, like in Leisure World, you have bus benches out front. I don't care if you care if there's advertising there. At Heron Point, I don't know if, I don't know if you have benches outside of Heron Point or not. But, you know, being a residential area, you may not want commercial, maybe you don't care. And I noticed your list left out the one in front of Sunrise, and as I've said previously, if you have an advertising-type bench there at Sunrise, I don't see any objection to that at this time, because there's one there now and no one's objecting, and I didn't see it on your list, for example. But on the other hand, that's the limitation I'd like to see. I mean, just like we wouldn't want, I don't think we'd ever want advertising benches on Main Street or on the pier, again, it's important that we don't have in residential area, which is what we're trying to accomplish here. So if possible, I would like to see it limited to the select streets like Seal Beach Boulevard, Pacific Coast Highway, and Marina, or whatever, you may choose. But that's not necessary, I just think it's a nice term that could be added to the agreement. That's my comments.
All right. On under 10.1.2, it says that if we determine that the advertising does not meet the standards for one reason or another of the city, that we would tell them to remove the advertising within 24 hours. Would it not be easier if they brought the advertising to us first for approval, rather than put it on and then have to take it off?
Do you have any problem with that?
I just believe that makes it difficult for programs. We have standards--
Why don't you come up to the microphone, please, Michael?
Mayor, at this time, why don't we just go ahead and open up the public hearing, and then you can answer the questions? All right, yeah. At this time, public hearing is open.
Michael, why don't you wait till after the public hearing? Why don't you wait till after the public hearing?
If anyone from the public would like to approach the podium? All right, Sean?
Yeah, in regards to the advertising, we have very specific standards of what type of advertising we accept. We have over 8,000 benches throughout Los Angeles and Orange County, and it's just rare that we ever have a municipality tell us to take down advertising because our standards are so high. So any other questions on that? I mean, it's just hard to go to each city and get approval for the creative. That usually slows down the launch of a campaign, and usually we're under a pretty tight deadline. But we don't accept certain types of advertising at all, so--
Why would you be under a tight deadline for advertising on a bus bench?
Yeah, when you, a lot of times the creative, like we have a campaign right now that's launching, we don't even have the creative yet, and when it comes, we have to immediately print it and get it posted.
This is for an special event?
Uh, no.
And then--
Yeah, we do a lot of regional advertising and national advertising. So a local advertiser, you're right, it wouldn't have that same deadline problem, but on the regional and national, a lot of times you get the creative very late.
Can you give me an example of what would have a tight deadline?
Like Metro PCS is doing a launch right now. They don't have their creative yet. They're supposed to be posted in like five days, so we're going to get the creative and have just like two days to print and then two days to rush out and get it posted. So a lot of times the advertisers are behind on getting the creative and getting those things put together, or they make changes at the last minute. So, I mean, there's no city that we have within LA or Orange County that requests that we show them the creative, but they all have the same language, and that they have total control over it, and we will remove it within 24 hours if anything's objectional. And we've never had to, in seven years, remove any creative.
Okay. And I might answer the financial question. The money that's in this, that guaranteed minimum, is only the minimum. If, the revenue will be based on a percentage, it's 20% of revenue, so it likely could be a lot higher so that it's not going to--
What is that estimate?
Sorry?
What is the revenue estimate?
What is the revenue estimate to the city? Well, what is, what is the revenue estimate to the city?
Yes.
Um, and we just drew out a conservative number on that, but we're expecting to sell the benches anywhere from $100 to $200, um, and then, and generate 20% of, uh, to the city on a monthly basis.
Per, per bench?
Yeah, yeah.
So we make it $20. That's right back to the minimum, I noticed, but, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, Mike. Um, I don't see much about shelters in here. And I know on PCH, there's some with shelters. I don't remember shelters in the-
That's, I think, a different contract, yeah.
It's handled by Clear Channel Outdoor handles the bus shelter contract.
But that would be a different contract.
That's, that's a separate agreement from this one.
But then, what, they put advertising on the shelters now?
Correct. That, that agreement allows that vendor to sell advertising in those shelters.
And, and our agreement here doesn't allow us to put a bench next to a shelter. So it would have to be-
So that's a contract. One thing I'd like to comment on in that is, as far as the, having trash connection, collection at each place. From what I've heard, at least up into my area, is that there's a couple places where the kids meet to catch their school buses. And on those, they get a lot of trash, and that needs a lot of work. But other areas are kept pretty clean, because basically, it's housekeepers taking the buses in this Long Beach, et cetera. So I don't think there's any flat rule you can do. You almost have to handle that case by case. Or whatever. Okay.
I, I have a question. Is there going to be a conflict? Like, let's say you have a, a, um, advertising bench, and we decide that we would rather have a shelter bench, there's no problem with removing it and us transferring over?
No, and this agreement allows for that.
The other question is if, if we were to, there's no, nothing to say that we couldn't, we, the city, couldn't put our own trash cans next to your bench and dump them ourselves? Because my issue is, I just use the scenario where we dump the trash can every two weeks. If we dumped it every week, this would go from a revenue to an expense, and more expensive, twice as expensive as, well, we don't have an expense there right now.
Yeah.
So that's my, my only concern. We're going to go from a revenue to an expense. And I understand your economics, too, that you can't come out and do 18 trash cans, so I don't know the answer to that. I, I also have somebody that's asking for trash cans right now next to one of these benches that has just shown up, and because they're across the street from a shopping center, they, they receive a lot of trash on the street. So I don't know the answer. I just want everybody to be aware, it may become an expense rather than a, than a revenue.
We assure the city that, uh, when we empty the trash, we're going to do a survey for two months, and a lot of trash cans don't need to be emptied on a, a weekly basis. So if we end up emptying it twice a month, we would only charge the city twice a month for that.
But again, it's still an expense for the city. But that's okay, we're giving something. I mean, but I don't know, ultimately, you may decide it's easier for the city to drive by and grab trash out of 18 trash cans every month. And so then it would become a revenue again. So I just, I just want the, the council to be aware that it's potentially an expense.
Yeah.
But I don't think you'd, as Councilman Schenck said, I, I don't think we'd do it at every, and you said we wouldn't do it at every location. I don't even know that we need a trash can at every location.
And probably. And none of these locations have had a trash can, ever. They have trash, not a trash can.
All, all the shelters have trash cans, and, and they're taken care of, and those are the, really, the busiest stops.
How do you interpretate, how do you interpret that section 9.4 that says you're going to keep it litter-free at all times? How are you going to, how are you going to do that?
You know, uh, uh, crews go by, um, and we have regular routes, and they check each stop, and if they need to, they sweep around the bench, uh, and pick up any litter or any, any trash or anything that's blown, uh, behind the bench.
How often will they do that?
Uh, they do that on a weekly basis, but with the new locations that we're picking up that aren't ours, we're going to survey those for two months, make sure that we know the hotspots in the city. Um, like, right now, there's 63 designated hotspots in Orange County that we go to twice a week, actually. Uh, but most of them can be just hit once a week.
But when, when they're there and they dump the trash can, that's $10. But when they're there and don't dump the trash can, it's free?
Most of the, most of the stops don't have trash cans in, in Orange County, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
I think, based on the discussion about revenue and expenses, as you note in the staff report, it's a relatively small estimation of revenue on this franchise agreement. I think, in reality, that's a, that's a secondary benefit to our ability to have the discretion to regulate bus benches citywide, so.
All of the bus benches will have some sort of a device that will prevent them from becoming sleeping quarters?
Yes, for maintenance, bring it up, yes.
All right. Oh, one other question. You said that the shelters, which is another contract provided by somebody else, are not allowed to be placed over the bench? Did I, did I understand you correctly?
We're not allowed to put a bench next to a bus shelter. So there will only be a bus shelter or a bus bench. So in our contract, if there's a bus shelter there, we will not be putting the advertising bench next to it.
Do all shelters have benches?
The shelters, uh, generate significantly larger income for the-
Do all shelters have benches provided by the shelter company?
They do. They're inside of the shelter, they're seating.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Any, no other comments from the community? All right, then. I have a motion to approve-
Close the public hearing, please.
For me?
Uh, I didn't, can you close the public hearing?
All right, yeah. Seeing no questions, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Now, am I to have a motion? Okay. All those in favor of approving?
Presumably, I didn't even see who actually made the motion, but that's including those changes that we read into the record.
Yes.
Including the one additional change on page seven, on the second line, where it says, "Grantee will have the option to install one to two bus benches, subject to city approval."
Thank you.
Okay.
Who actually made the motion?
Michael did. Second.
All right. Please vote. That carries 4-0. And the final public hearing. Housing and Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2012, 2013.
Mayor, sorry to go back to that last item, but there was the ordinance as well, so I need to read the title.
Go ahead.
And so, you just approved the agreement, um, if there's a motion to adopt ordinance number 1614, "An Ordinance in the City of Seal Beach Granting a Franchise to Coastline Advertising Corporation to Install, Operate, and Maintain Bus Benches in the City of Seal Beach." There are motions to adopt the ordinance.
There is a motion to adopt the ordinance.
And a second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And now, moving on to the second and final, the Resolution 62216, authorizing the city's participation in the community development block grant for Leisure World's bathroom improvements, and the city manager report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Development Services Director, Mark Persico, will present this item to you tonight. Mark?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before the council this evening is approval of a resolution which would allow the city to participate in the, uh, Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, this would be the city's eighth year of attendance. Um, over the last seven years, this program has funded improvements in Leisure World to improve disability access within the bathrooms. Over the last seven years, we've done over 500 bathroom improvements. These are to individual homeowners' units, um, and we have received one point, almost $1.2 million from Orange County through this program. The, this, if this resolution is approved, this would be the city's eighth year of attend, of, uh, participation in the program. We have received anywhere from about $150,000 to $200,000 a year from Orange County. We're proposing to, uh, seek $200,000 in, uh, funding from Orange County, uh, in order to do bathroom improvements. This would be for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 1213. Previously, the, um, city's portion of this, in other words, the administration, has been paid out of the redevelopment agency. At this point, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we're not sure what the status of redevelopment is, and what the status of, um, the city taking on housing programs. We do believe that if the city does continue to do housing programs that we can use, um, they won't be called redevelopment funds, they'll, they'll have another name, but it'll essentially be the same funding source, meaning non-general fund money. Um, so we do believe that we'll be able to use $60,000 in the next fiscal year for, um, administration of this project. If that's not the case, if, um, funds aren't available, then there will be exposure to the city's general fund in the amount of about $60,000. But again, at this point, we don't believe that there is any risk or exposure to the general fund, but, um, we won't know that for certain for another couple of months. So that concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Council comments?
How do, how do they determine who gets, who gets the, uh, Leisure World, who gets the bathtub changed?
Um, there are two standards. Um, there's more need than there are funds available, so we do take applications on a first-come, first-served basis. The application also does require that a doctor, um, state what the, uh, need for the improvements to the bathroom are. And then with those two things, uh, they're reviewed against the criteria. Basically, it's, uh, income-based. So if you're, um, early enough in the list, and you do have a doctor's note, and you meet the income requirements, then you would be funded.
Thank you.
Gary? I open the public hearing to the community?
City Council, Robert Corbett, Seal Beach. We almost made it through the night without hearing from you. No monster. Um, as the staff report says, uh, um, we're hoping that we'll be able to use $60,000 from the successor agency, I guess, since it won't be redevelopment agency. But from my understanding of this, we are currently using approximately $60,000 a year from the redevelopment agency for, um, administration of this program. So it seems like that $60,000 should be reflected on our obligation schedule, going back to item F, I believe. Um, I don't know if the city attorney can, because this is a pretty complete list, and you added lots of things. Um, it seems like the administrative costs for this program should be on this list, because we, it's a current expense.
I think it's, well, item four. Uh, for the last fiscal year, Civic Stone, I think there's $50,000 left during the fiscal year. Uh, that's the, the CDBG program, you see that?
Yes.
But it is on the list. But as mentioned earlier, um, that number's going down. Um, it's 12, 5, 12, 5, 12, 5. Which, and then, it's, depending on what happens, whether the successor agency, um, assumes the housing obligations of the, um, former redevelopment agency, this may need to be revised in May and June. But for now, it's reflected in that set, in that, uh, on that line. And just for the benefit of the public and the city council, um, as we've mentioned, every two weeks, we're going to be doing something else because of AB 26. But we're recommending that the council consider assuming those housing responsibilities at the first meeting in February. So we may know a little bit more next month.
I think I can also, um, provide some additional information on that. This year, the city didn't receive, um, a $200,000 allocation from, uh, Orange County. We have, over the last three years, received $200,000, but because Orange County received less money from the federal government in terms of federal block grant funds, we received a smaller allocation, which meant that Civic Stone, their proportion went down. The $60,000 estimate for the next fiscal year would be based upon a $200,000 allocation that we would receive from Orange County. So if the allocation from Orange County is under $200,000, then Civic Stone's administrative costs would be lower.
So we got no CBG money this year? This fiscal year?
We did. We got 100, I believe it was $168,000. So the administrative costs, Civic Stone's administrative costs were $50,000. Next year, again, that $60,000 is an estimate, and as the city attorney notes, once we get closer to the beginning of next fiscal year, we'll have a better idea what those administrative costs will be.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the, from the council?
Just, that's, that's a very popular program, and, uh, it's very well-accepted, and, uh, I'm glad that we've decided to go ahead and, uh, follow through with it.
All right. And do I have any more comments from the audience? I declare the public hearing closed. Uh, I just have one comment for those of you watching this in Leisure World tonight. If you are in need of, of this improvement in your bathroom, and if your doctor's willing to sign it, I suggest you get your application in as quickly as possible. We're not too sure how much longer this program will be available. All right. Do I have a motion on this item?
Approval.
Second. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, we're doing this correctly this time? Are you on the re-
Yes.
All right.
There's no ordinance.
And that motion passes for 4-0. We have no other items for the council. We have no new business before the council, and therefore, I adjourn city council till February 13th at 6:30.
Oh, we have a something in that audience.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, my name is Bruce Panting, um, with Truth 642. And for our staff certification, could we go through each one of your duties, so they would understand why they're sitting here? Um, obviously, you are a mayor, and if the rest of you could announce where your positions are, even for people on the sidelines, uh, the, uh, police officers. Um, it doesn't look like we'll get too unruly, but do you understand why a police officer would be at a meeting? I don't know if that'd be out of line for our meeting, but I think for our scout, I think it would be, it would be meditation.
All right, why don't we finish the journey for tonight? And it is adjourned until 6:30, February 13th. If we need a closed session, otherwise, the meeting is adjourned. And, uh, I'll start off with, I am a city council representative. I represent many of the people in Leisure World as a fifth district council member. If there are problems, they, they come to us, and we deal with any issues that they have with the city, and we try to help them in any way the city can.
Uh, Gary Miller, I'm District Four, which is College Park East, uh, the old Ranch Homes, Sunrise, and I represent that district, as well as the whole city, and I'm the mayor pro temp for this next year.
Gordon Schenck, my district is District Three, which is primarily the hill with a little bit of Old Town. And just for clarification, because I'm sure this could confuse people, there are two kinds of cities in California, charter cities and general law cities. And charter cities can pick and do a lot of business their own way. And in this city, that's why we have districts. But general law cities, basically, you run for the whole city. So this could be confusing between general law cities and charter cities.
It wasn't until now.
He said it wasn't until now.
I'm David Sloan. My district is District Two, and which includes, uh, the North Forty out there in College Park West, and also part, uh, part of Leisure World, and the condos and townhomes in Rosmore. And we, uh, as, as council people, we try to respond to the public. We get several phone calls. People need things like broken sidewalks or whatever, and we try to take care of those things as quick as possible. And of course, that means that we have a city manager that responds to those for us.
And I would like to add, the missing party is Elrie Deaton, who is the councilwoman from District One. She is over in China right now, uh, celebrating the New Year of the, Year of the Dragon. And, uh, she has the beach area and Old Town, basically, and, uh, a lot of stuff goes on in Old Town. But, uh, we, we try to keep the city going, but if it weren't for our city manager and our city attorney, and our chief of police, and our, he doesn't like the, safety lifeguard man, and everybody else, uh, and, uh, yeah, what is it? Our assistant city manager and, and public works, he wears a lot of hats, and, and, basically, planning community development. Uh, and our city clerk, I don't want to be- And our city clerk, I don't want to be, it takes a lot of people, even though this isn't a very big city, there's a lot of things that, don't forget, up in Sacramento, we have a legislature that spends all our time making us work very hard and making our staff work very hard. Thank you.
Councilman Schenks basically very eloquently defined what all of us do, but my name's Jill Ingram, I'm the city manager. I'm appointed by the five council members. I serve basically as the chief executive officer of the city, have oversight over all the departments, the day-to-day operations. And the council basically functions as the policymakers of the city, so it's my responsibility to ensure that those policies get implemented.
Yes, and I'm the city attorney for the city. And it's my job to provide legal advice to the city on procedural matters and other legal matters. And so I sit up here every two weeks for the council and try to keep them out of trouble.
Councilmember Schenks went over. I'm the Marine Safety Department Lifeguard Chief. So officially, my department's called the Marine Safety Department, but we're still all lifeguards down there at the beach. And I'm at this meeting to report on conditions at the beach and answer any questions regarding the beach.
And if you get hit by a stingray, he's the guy you want to see.
And I'm Bob Lumen, I'm the chief of police and I'm also the sergeant of arms for this meeting. And that means that I make sure that everybody comes in and says what they need to say, but does so in a responsible manner, just like you have.
And behind you?
I'm Shelly Lynn, I'm the director of finance. I make sure all the mayor and council and the city attorney and city manager and department head gets paid. And I will make sure all our vendors and contact and services get their payments too. And I make sure everybody pays within the budget limits, and that's my main focus. Make sure you don't overspend, show allowances from your parents. And that's my job.
Over here.
Hello, Michael, Michael Silver. Oh, there's Mike.
I'm hiding in the back, but my name is Michael Ho, I'm the city engineer. I'm responsible for everything in the public right-of-way, which is the street, curves and gutters and things like that, and water and sewer gets provided to your house and infrastructure, so you can have a good livable home.
My name is Linda Devine, and I'm an elected city clerk. And my responsibilities are for the public records, taking minutes at the meetings, and any records that you need to, you can get it through my office.
I'm Sean Crumbie, I'm the assistant city manager. I'm also the director of public works. I work with Michael Ho on management of our city property and city assets. I also work with several of the other departments here. I work with Mr. Tim Kelsey, working on our recreation programs throughout the city.
And my name is Mark Praseko, I'm the director of development services. I oversee planning, building, and code enforcement. So if anybody's doing a remediation, making improvements to their property, they come see my department, get permits through my department. And then we're also responsible for the long-term planning of the community. Where's the community going to go 10 years from now, 20 years from now? That's what I do.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight. And we expect to see some of you up here as city council members.